Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
If you pick our meetings, you know that's a challenge. First of all, thank you all for coming tonight. We do appreciate it and we want to welcome you here. I've got a couple of sort of just housekeeping things about the facility and the program tonight, so if you want this, you can see this on District 58's YouTube channel right now. It will be hosted by the other bodies tomorrow or within a couple of days, so you certainly can go back and look if you want to say, "What did that person say?" Or, "Let me hear that again." Welcome to Herrick Middle School. That's the first thing. The -- pardon the dust. If you look around, you'll see obvious signs of the great work that District 58 is doing. I think we're all probably pretty excited about that, but they are in the midst of it. District 58, thank you in particular, and thank you to Dr. Russell and his team for hosting us tonight. One of the challenges of any public body is accommodating what we think is going to be a big crowd, so we really appreciate the help from District 58. Agendas, there were agendas on the side tables. I don't know if they're gone, but if they are gone and you want an agenda and you see somebody sitting by you, there's a QR code on there, so you should be able to scan the QR code and pull up the agenda if you'd like. And then the last little piece of business, I don't expect that we're going to be here all night, but if you need to, back down the hall where you came in and on the left is where the bathrooms are, so feel free to make use of those as needed. We're going to call this meeting to order the way we normally call village council meetings to order. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. We hope you'll join us.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Enzo, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Barnett?
Here.
Commissioner Jose? Commissioner Sadowski-Fugit?
Here.
Commissioner Gil Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Glover?
Here.
Commissioner Tully?
Here.
Commissioner Davenport?
Here.
Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Sladek?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
Trustee Gagani? President Topic?
Here.
Welcome, everybody, colleagues and colleagues. We appreciate everybody's efforts to get participate to. That is certainly one of the challenges that you might expect is getting 13 people all to find a time that their various schedules between work and play and family can allow. So, we've had some challenges doing that, but thank you all for making the effort tonight. Commissioner Jose was going to be here. He has a challenge in his family with an illness. Trustee Gagani has a little bit of a challenge with some family issues as well this evening, but we appreciate everybody's efforts. Thank you. There was an agenda published. I'm really worried, done a bad job with this mic. All of a sudden, I can hear me. And so hopefully, everyone understands what the purpose of this evening is. It really is an opportunity, hopefully, for us to come together as a couple of bodies and move forward in a way that we think we all can get comfortable with and get behind on behalf of the community. President Topic and I had had several conversations over the last several weeks, and it seems like there may be broad support to explore this issue, the issue of how trustees, library board trustees, are selected. And so with that in mind, we hope tonight to put together some ideas about a framework. We don't expect to solve the question or even sort out exactly what that looks like going forward, but what we're hoping to do tonight is get sort of some broad consensus among these two bodies to put together a group to figure this out and to try and understand how we can go about learning together to see if there is a different option that makes sense. There may or may not be. So with that, it's really a focus on framework tonight, and Matt, you have anything you want to add?
No, I would just echo that, all of that, and thank you for the time that we spent talking about the issue, and I very much think that this is a productive way to go forward and to have a discussion about how trustees are selected. I think it's perfectly appropriate to be looking at that issue, and I think that doing it in the way that you and I had talked about and that's laid out in the statement that we released, I think is the best way to have those discussions.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure talking to Matt over the last few weeks. I think we probably only talked for a few minutes before that, so it's nice to actually learn somebody and learn a little bit about them. For this evening, I'll just lay out a few expectations that I have. At the village council, one of the processes we take when we're taking up a subject is we try and get a set of goals, a set of what we call desired outcomes. What kinds of things are we hoping to have happen? And then we try and build to those, and we build to those by understanding what the questions are, what desired outcomes that all of our colleagues are looking for, and then we try and have some help and some input typically from our staff in getting to a point where we actually would make a decision of some kind. So one of the things that is on my mind tonight is there won't be decisions likely made other than perhaps to go forward. But I do have some expectations that we'll all get an opportunity to talk about what those desired outcomes are. There are going to be at least 11 different versions of what's important and what needs to be considered as we put such a group together, and we want to get all those sort of in the record and on the table for, to get some help defining. I have asked our staff, village staff, to sort of help tally that, so you might have a situation where five or six of us are all interested in the same outcome, and it's important to understand what all those are, and then record all the different possibilities. So with that, they will be taking some notes. I may at some point refer back to them or ask for them to help summarize some things, tell me what they've heard. And then I'm hopeful that what we will do tonight is come to agreement on a future date where we will work through some things in much more detail. So hopefully, we'll find some agreement to move forward. We'll agree on some dates, and we'll get a list of the subjects that we really need to get some detail on in order to form a committee or form a group or figure out next steps. So with that, there was, as Matt indicated, there was a statement that he and I put together, and I'd welcome any conversation and dialogue to start from anyone up here. Anyone want to sort of start the conversation? Go ahead, Marty.
I just want to set, hopefully, a tone saying that all of us, I think, of both bodies are very appreciative of the work our respective leadership has done in getting us to this point. The governance ideas that have been kicked around in the course of discussions over the last couple of months are worth looking at. There really hasn't been disagreement on the idea of examining the entire process and the entire governance structure. We've had some differences on how to approach it and on process, and that's really what we're dealing with here tonight. All of us here want what is best for Downers Grove as a community, what's best for the library, and I for one am prepared to do the work to find out what that is and then implement it.
Go ahead, Dave.
I just want to thank Mayor Barnett, President Topic, for getting together and setting up for this session, for speaking together. A few weeks ago, I said two words. I said, "Let's talk," and I'm thrilled that that has happened. I want to thank them. I want to thank, by the way, I want to thank all of our staff folks that are over here, plus many who are not here, for setting up this meeting for this evening. It was no small job, just getting this many microphones. But, so we thank them for that, and the proposal that is going to be talked about tonight, I think, is a very good step in the right direction. It's an opportunity for both groups here, all the staffs and all of you, to learn what's best for Downers Grove. So, let's have at it.
Marty?
Thank you, Mayor, and my thanks as well to everybody for coming out on a snowy night right after the holidays. It's a bit cold, so really appreciate you taking the time to be here. Contrary to popular belief, I think both of these organizations love to see a packed crowd because it means that people are out and they're engaged, so we really appreciate you taking the time to come out. And I add my appreciation to that which has already been expressed to the leadership of both organizations, the members of both organizations, as well as the staff of both organizations. And as a former Herrick parent, I appreciate District 58 for making this possible and making it available beyond this room. I'm going to pick up on what Marty said because I think all of us have heard, and we've even said it amongst ourselves, that the question is an interesting question, and most people have said, I think, "Yeah, that is an interesting question, but I really want more information. I want more research, and I want more time to think about it before anybody does anything or even starts down a path where we start to really invest a lot of time and money." So I think that this is a really good way to do that, is by the two groups getting together and basically talking over a course of time to explore and educate and then figure out where we're at. The other thing that we heard a lot about as well, why are we treating this like the video gaming question that was recently addressed in November? And so I'm kind of thinking about it like that. In video gaming, there was an issue. It was up, and then it was out, and it was on hold, and it was back up, and there were people who were both interested in, there were people who were not interested in. But what was done is basically the pros were identified and the cons were identified, and they were discussed and they were explained, and there was information about those pros and the cons, and the key thing being, well, what would those things look like? Because conceptually, there's not a lot of substance to that. It's like, okay, what are we really talking about? What it might look like? And most importantly to me, what would it might look like in Downers Grove? And those pros and cons have to be identified, and then you do two things. You take the time to test the pros. I mean, are the pros really pros? Or do we just think they're pros? And then you also see if the cons can be addressed, because there might be cons, but then you could talk about, well, what if we did this? What if we did that? Okay, maybe it's not a con anymore. Then after all that's done, then you assess whether there's still interest, and if there is, then you can do something further and maybe either act jointly or ask the community what they think, but it'll be with the benefit of time, research, and information. So I think this framework that's been described in the joint statement is a great structure for allowing that to happen over a reasonable period of time that not only allows engagement by these two boards on top of everything else we have going on, because we do both have other things to do in service of the community, but it also allows the community to really get involved and to participate in that discussion of what are the pros, what are the cons, what would it look like, and then kind of get to a point, well, you know, is this something we're interested in or not? My guess is at the end of the road, some people thought it was a good idea, might think it's not so, such a good idea, and some people thought it was a terrible idea, might think, well, you know, maybe there are flavors of this ice cream that would be okay, but we don't know that yet. And I think this spring work is a great way to get started down that path, and I really want to thank everybody up here, and particularly the leadership, President Topic and Mayor Barnett, in coming together with the joint statement and allowing everybody to kind of go along for the ride and see where it gets us. Thank you.
Anyone want to jump in? Nathan, go ahead.
Sure. Let me start with a statement about the setting here. I never expected to return to middle school, but perhaps is acceptable, given that we're all processing our trauma as public officials. I think the framework's great, and as general contours of this discussion, I think it's a helpful starting point. And I echo everything that everyone's said so far, so I won't repeat it, but I do appreciate, particularly President Topic's leadership, given that he's new. Mayor, you've been here a while. I'd also say that I agree with Commissioner Tully's framework, the sort of analytical framework, pros and cons, but subject to one caveat, which is that I think we have to look at the pros and cons of a change to an elected board, but I think we also have to look more holistically at what is wrong with the current appointment process or what could be addressed and enhanced about the current appointment process if that ultimately ends up being the recommendation or the path forward for one or both of our, you know, from both of our bodies' perspective. So, I would, I don't know whether that should go into the mandate. Our position, or my position, might be that it should go into the mandate, that we sort of are weighing both things, which is there's pros and cons to an public election, but there's also pros and cons to an appointment process. And so, you know, I think that needs to be part of the lens. I'd also like to say that everyone here cares about our community and our library, and I think we should assume each other is acting in good faith. I think that will build trust across both bodies. And then another principle, public officials should de-escalate conflict within our community. I expressed that to a couple of the council members today, and that we should model the behavior that we expect of others, and so I think we should all be mindful of that as we go through this process. I said that the special committee's mandate should include a review and assessment of the current appointment process, and maybe part of that thinking is that there might be more narrowly tailored ways of achieving our objective. And I set up our special committee meeting on, in December, summer 10th, maybe. I said that when I think about decision-making, I try to be a pragmatist and a minimalist, and those are values that, you know, that I think apply to this situation as well. And I also said during my interview process that I believe that the starting point for resolving division and differences of opinion is looking for core principles and core values. And so I hope when the subcommittee is formed, that we'll use that as a starting place. Thank you.
I'll go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. I think, Nathan, you've nailed some points that I wanted to make, so I won't repeat them. I think one of the concerns that I have is going down the path of this elected versus appointed, knowing what the viability of actually having an elected board would be. We have already heard from, I think, everyone on the council say that the idea of a library district is not of interest, and so the other option would be a change in library law, state law, that has only happened once, as far as I know. It's the Aurora example that's been thrown around, and it was never actually executed on. So we have a situation where this elected idea, as far as I know, and I would welcome any further insight, is almost a non-starter. And so if we are looking at alternative ways to appoint the library board or to place the library board, I think we need to focus on what is likely or possible rather than spending a lot of time looking at alternatives that, in my view, have almost no possibility of happening. So I welcome the idea of this group. I think myself and a few other council members, this was the first thing we tried to talk about when this idea of the referendum came up, is to have a conversation, so I welcome this. But when we think about what this committee's objective is, I think we need to understand exactly what that is and then work from there rather than start with an idea of where we might go and end up in a place where we can't go. So I, again, I think it's very important that this group keep this communication going, but I think my feeling on the subcommittee is, let's use that time wisely and make sure that we're going down a path of viability.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I echo a lot of what Commissioner Gil Martin just said. I mean, I think, as most, everyone here probably knows, I was uncomfortable with such a large topic being brought up in a very hectic, two-year, long-range planning timeline, so I believe this kind of, this topic is more akin to a priority action item, as I know I've stated before. So the framework laid out for the subcommittee, in my opinion, starts to address some of those concerns that, you know, I have been hearing from some of my colleagues. You know, we talk about the appointment process, aligning our governance structures, just kind of some of those topics, so I would definitely be interested in the subcommittee to start to address some of those places where some of my colleagues have had some concerns, and it'll better align us with what the library board of trustees is doing and improve our working relationship so that we can continue making our library and the village the best we can here. So I think the framework is a great start, and I would love to see those conversations continue. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else want to jump in?
I wasn't going to say anything, but I do want to echo, Chris used the word viability, and that's kind of where I'm, what I'm thinking of. I want to thank our leadership. I want to really acknowledge the staff because I know that this was a lot, and so we appreciate you. That's something I think is really important to say, and I also, kind of what Leslie said, I want to make sure that what we're doing is viable, but I also know that working in isolation leads to confusion sometimes and mistrust, so I am looking forward to us working together to sort of settle that, and we're one really small community. Downers Grove is not a huge place, so, yeah, I'm cautiously optimistic, more optimistic than cautious, that we can figure out a way to do what's best for our community because I know that we volunteered our time and you have volunteered and been elected to serve Downers Grove, so I'm excited. Thank you.
Actually, that's a great segue. Thank you, Bernal, because I was just going to add that, I didn't say it before because start with baby steps, small steps, walk before you run, but I would really like to be more ambitious in terms of what this subcommittee can do, and some who have already spoken have touched upon it, and that would include going back to having regular joint meetings between the library board of trustees and the village council. It would go back to having regular established liaisons between both boards so that, to your point, it's not something that we read about in somebody else's newsletter or hear about on social media, but we actually have people attending each other's meetings who can say, "Hey, there's something going on," or we don't have a situation where the library is trying to divine what the village council thinks. We should be right there to be able to talk and say that, and vice versa. We shouldn't have to divine what the library board of trustees is thinking. If we have a liaison, we can actually participate in the conversation, not as a voting member, but as somebody who can speak to those things. And yeah, I mean, I think that's an opportunity to explore all things, so those who have raised other topics that we can look at, what you mentioned, Nathan, for example, certainly can be on the table, as well as other opportunities for further collaboration. And I will agree with others who have said that there's no reason to tilt at windmills, so if there's something that is not possible, then we shouldn't waste a lot of time talking about it, but I think it's probably fair to at least explore something enough so that everybody understands why it's not possible. I think some perhaps have spent a fair amount of time on the internet researching things, and not everybody's had the benefit of that, and I think at least that would be beneficial so that folks understand, okay, why have we not gone down this path? Why are we going down this path? Or why have we stopped going down a path? That's, I think that's all part of the process, but that's a fair point. Now I'll stop.
May I?
Yeah, Marty, please.
I think too, what both commissioners are telling, Commissioner Gil Martin said, sorry, Chris.
That's okay.
I don't think anything is absolutely off the table at this point. It behooves if this, we're going to do a thorough process to take a look at all the possible options, and if some look like they're just not going to work for whatever reasons, we take them off the table. There also is nothing mutually exclusive about going in that direction and work to bring more clarity to the existing appointment process. Both of our bodies heard that from the public over the last few months, and whether that means that the council works on it because essentially it's your problem, not ours, or if you ask for input from those of us who've gone through the process, you know, that's part of what the subcommittee can look at, or maybe it's split off into a separate thing. But I see parallel things going on. One is the kind of blue sky, what would great governance really look like? And the other is, how do we do some immediate, if not fixes, at least tweaks in both the process and the communication about the process? Because we don't know what may come up. An opening could come up even before what we're anticipating, so we don't want to put that up totally on the back burner.
Is that a here, here?
No, that's a, I hope not. I think it's a plastic table, though, not a wooden table, if that's where you were.
Anyone else want to jump in? I got a couple of things I wanted to mention, really about the potential work collectively that we do forward. Those are going to involve, I think they need to involve meetings that are not part of our regular meetings, that's one thing. We all have lots of stuff to do. I also think it's open, it's important that they're open and transparent meetings. You know, whether they have to be or not, I think, we know that this is an important subject, the entire community, and they need to be open meetings that are attendable and, you know, recorded, and people get a chance to digest whatever is said and whatever paths we're headed down. And then the other thing I think is, I think we need to be talking about a date certain to end that effort. You know, that we may yet not do, you know, I think probably we're thinking at this point, most of us are thinking that we're probably not going to ask for a referendum this spring, but I think it's important to, for some, to preserve that opportunity in the future. And so I think it needs, whatever group we assemble or however we collectively decide to go forward, needs to have some sort of a target end date as well.
Yeah, I'll just jump in on that. I agree, and I think the fall is probably, you know, loosely what we would be looking at. I think that gives enough time to really look at the issues. As we've already seen, this is a fairly complex issue. There's a number of different options. There's a number of different options within options, and so to really evaluate those, I think will take a period of months, but I understand this should not be an open-ended process that continues on and on, and so I think if we targeted, you know, something like September, I think that's enough time for a group to look at everything, assemble the information for all of us to talk more and sort of feel like we've run that to ground and we've done the development of what the different perspectives are and options are, and then that still leaves plenty of time. If anyone wanted to put something on the ballot for April of 2026, there would still be, I think, a couple, two, three months of time to do that, so I think that seems like a good time period to target completing the work.
Some head nods up and down the table. Dave, please.
Yeah, I agree with that timeframe, by the way. One sidebar here, I guess I, should I say this, should I not say this? I guess I'll say it. I attended this building for seventh and eighth grade. How many people attended this school? See? I don't know what that means, but it's significant to me. I just wanted to point out one other benefit of this process, and Bob mentioned, Mayor Barnett mentioned that it was to be an open process, and I think that's important. I can't tell you how many telephone calls I've gotten in the last month from people saying, "What is this all about? What are the ramifications of this? What do I have to know in order to vote on this referendum?" And this process is going to allow these two boards to study the two options and the many sub-ops. many sub-options of each of the two options, and get some outside, perhaps professional, you know, expertise on these subjects. And we're going to learn. But in the same process of that, you're going to learn, and the community is going to learn. And that's important because we're doing it for the community of Downers Grove and for all of us. And it's important that all of us learn the ramifications and the options and so forth. You've entrusted us to make final decisions here, but you need to know why. And if it comes down to a referendum of some sort someday, you need to know how to vote. So, I urge you to pay attention, but I think that's the opportunity we have with this process.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I would also add, I think, and I don't know if now is the time to discuss this, but I think the other, the devil is a bit in the details. And in terms of an alternative way to select Library Board Trustees has to have come from something. We have to know what the issues are. So, for example, during this process, I have heard members of the council, I've heard the public talk about the transparency of the selection process, something that I get, I understand, the process feels a little back room. That's one example. I've also heard things like accountability tossed around a bit. I'm not sure I have a clear understanding of the issues that we are trying to fix here. So, I think it would be helpful to me, I think, our residents, as well as this potential subcommittee, to understand what they are trying to fix. Because I think there are a couple of things that I've heard. The transparency is one in the interview process, and I think we have reasons for why those are done behind doors, mostly to protect those who are being interviewed from maybe a public display, something they didn't sign up for per se. But I understand that desire to understand who is applying. Outside of that, I'm not sure, and maybe some of my fellow council members can share what the issues are we're trying to solve, especially if we're going to spend this much time and effort in solving it. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Gil Martin, for saying that. I think I'm looking forward to, and maybe that happens in these committees, that we get to what the root was of this question. And not to dwell on anything, but it's a five-star library, and we're very proud of it. So, I would love at some point to have that conversation. I think it's important. I think if we don't address that, then it's going to be difficult to move forward positively, although we are doing that now, and I'm excited about it, like I said. But I appreciate you saying that because I think that that would be helpful for us to know so that we can resolve that issue.
Nathan?
So, I can only make observations about other people, I can't get inside your heads. But I've talked to a few of the people that supported the referendum. And my observation is that there's been a breakdown of trust amongst the bodies, and perhaps this process in and of itself, regardless of the outcome, will help repair that trust. And so, I think there's some merit to the process regardless of what the ultimate outcome is. And I echo what Commissioner Tully said. I think we should think about ways in which we can be more coordinated and collaborative. And that will address some of the issues of accountability. And also, if you consider your appointment process, obviously that's within your purview, you can also consider your removal process. So, I don't have any issues with that. And I think that we'll be in a better place after this than we are now. And I think through the subcommittee, perhaps, we could get to some of the underlying issues. But I don't think they necessarily have to be aired tonight. I don't think it's helpful. I don't want this conversation to be backwards-looking. I expressed that to the commissioners today. I think, and this goes for public comment too, I think taking this moment in time and just saying, what's our path forward is the most productive conversation. Thank you, Mary.
Marty?
I think one of the things that this subcommittee will need to, at least some people who aren't as familiar with it yet, is the actual statutorily described job description of library trustees. And that's the same whether it's an elected or an appointed board. That doesn't change because the selection process changes. And it is, you know, very specific what the powers are and what the powers are not. So, if any of you, like me, occasionally get insomniac, become the local library act, that's a very informative section.
Mike?
Yeah, so, I too want to look forward. I'm not going to get drawn into discussion about what needs fixing. I've made plenty of comments about that in regards to bringing this up in the first place. I like the idea of looking forward. Any process that will end in the result of the citizens of Downers Grove having more input into the process and better understanding, more transparency in the process, I think is a win. And I also think neither the Library Board or the council has a history of just accepting things the way they are without thinking about how we can make things better. That's in our DNA, right? So, I think this group is primarily charged with looking at the process as it exists, looking for ways to make that process better, and coming back to us with a recommendation. And so, I definitely invite that. And I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I do have a question, though, because something was alluded to here, and it is something I have a little bit of concern about in this process, is budget and outside consultants, because there's been some discussion about that. And so, I'm wondering if we're going to put some sort of limit on that, or is there an expectation that maybe leadership's talked about there that you could share? But I think we need to have that discussion as well.
Well, I can tell you what some of the conversations, Matt can certainly jump in too. There is an expectation, at least in my mind, that if this group goes forward in whatever form it does, there will be something that comes up that requires some expenditure. I don't know what that is, but it seems likely that there would be. But we also have some systems right now within our organizations that allow for expenditures that aren't necessarily itemized in the budgets that were approved last fall. And so, as Matt and I were talking, you know, just kicking this around amongst ourselves, we kind of suspect that likely that could handle any of that. You know, if you decide you were going to split them, if you thought one group was more capable than the other, I don't think we're talking about a lot of money. And I don't think that should be in the way of this group going forward and trying to get everybody to a better place of understanding about what might be possible or what should be done. It's not totally an answer, but that's some of the conversation we've had. Matt, you want to add to that?
No, yeah, I agree. I don't think it will be a large number, but I think there are people who study these questions, that have expertise in these questions. You know, personally, I think you get what you pay for, so like, I think it's better to hire people to help rather than to sort of have, you know, who can do it as a volunteer. But it's all things that I think the subcommittee could look at. But like, I don't think any of it would rise to the level of requiring an RFP or, you know, a long, drawn-out process. So, modest, I guess, is how I would vision it.
That also strikes me as one of the things that we would want, is information back, right, about how, we're going to, you know, as I said, and I started, in my mind, we're going to come up with a list of things we need better answers to before we can decide how to put this together. And that'll involve input from both library staff and village staff. And I think that's one of the things we would expect some commentary on.
Marty?
Just to put a finer point on that, and yes, I think it would make sense to have the subcommittee take up as one of its early items, is that something that would need to be explored? And if so, what would be the recommendation back to the respective boards? But it's very important to me that, whatever that looks like, that this is a collaborative process. This is not one board or the other board having to do everything. We are working together on this, and whatever it is that we do is going to be jointly agreed upon in terms of any outside resources. So, I'm very consistent with what's already been said. It's not on one or the other. It's truly collaborative.
Just picking up on that a little bit, it maybe doesn't need to be said, but I think this should, whatever, if this ends up being a smaller subset of this group, I think it ought to be, ought to have some equal representation. You know, at the end of the day, we're trying to figure out how to work together collaboratively on behalf of the village. And so, we could wrestle about, you know, component units and all that other stuff, but that's not the point. So, I think it should be an equal representation going forward. Anyone else? Stuff to add? Dave, please, jump in.
Just a clarification. Our intention tonight is to discuss, we're not going to vote on anything here, but I don't think, but it's to discuss and to try to find a common way forward here. And it sounds like we're getting pretty close to that. We're not going to decide exactly who's on the committee and how many and what the budget is, and exactly what the detailed functioning of the committee is. But we are going to come up with a general charge to the committee, a schedule. Part of that charge is that it be collaborative and equal. And if agenda items come up, it'll be up to the subcommittee to decide. Is this something that contributes to our overall charge? And if it does, we'll include it. If it doesn't, we'll leave that for a later discussion. So, that's what's in my head, is I see some nods around the table, so I...
Yeah, let me put a little point on that. I think you're exactly right, Dave, about the goal for tonight and what would be expected next. When I alluded to earlier desired outcomes, what I'm envisioning, and I think Matt is as well, is that we would get some of these things we've talked about, as I'm taking notes, you know, some viability things, some governance comments, equal representation, transparent, there's a variety of things we've all sort of thrown into the hopper. And then what would happen is, we would have another meeting scheduled, probably in February. And between now and then, we would have our staff working on defining some of those things. So, when we come back together, the idea would be to have a clear understanding, decide which pieces we like and don't like, and then kick off whatever that group would be. You know, there's pluses and minuses to subcommittees of the whole, or subcommittees versus committees of the whole, another consideration that probably needs to be thought through. But if with these desired outcomes, I think we'll get some recommendations on that that we can consider. Anyone else? Is everybody feeling like they want to head bob this thing, let's go forward and ask for this kind of work and have them schedule another meeting, that kind of thing?
Yes.
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 How about you, Matt?
Yes. I've completely changed my mind, Mayor. No, yes, yeah, I think we, it feels like largely a consensus on this, yes.
I'm going to look over at the table that I think is taking notes. There's six of them over there. Looking for some head bobs, do you guys feel like you've gotten enough information that you could work on helping us build out what a plan looks like for a group? Yeah? Okay. Anything else from this group for the moment? Marty?
Just to clarify, so, the agenda item that the Village Council's put forward will not be moved forward for their action?
You kind of beat me to it.
Because I think that's the elephant in the room.
I was going to get to that. But I wanted to get the whole group in on this question. Is there anything else that we should be throwing into the table right now? I'm looking really primarily at the Library Board. Okay, so then I'm going to look to my left and say, yeah, one of the things that we have is an agenda that we need to publish tomorrow for our meeting on January 7th. And my hope for this evening is that this kind of progress would allow us to remove that from the agenda for January 7th. But that requires, again, kind of a head nod from this group. Is that what we, because last time we were together as a group, we thought we were going to put it on that. So, what are we thinking now?
Yes.
Remove it?
Remove it. Please.
All right, so we'll, you guys take that note as well.
We took that as directions, do not place it on the January 7th agenda, is that right, Mayor?
Yes, that's it. Okay. All right, so, next thing on our list for tonight is public comments. As Matt alluded to earlier, we're going to take public comments. At the Village Council meetings, we generally allow five minutes. But I'm looking across the audience and trying to figure out how we get to work tomorrow. So, what I'd like to do here, it's 8:20, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to ask people, you're welcome to come make comments, a couple of things. One is, the purpose of tonight's meeting, this group getting together, was to talk about what you just heard us talking about, which is a go-forward, a potential way for this group to go forward and consider and study the question that's been asked. I'm hopeful that we can keep comments, as you saw, from this body to that subject. I'm also going to ask people to try and shoot for three minutes instead of five, which we have at Village Councils, just to try and give more people a chance. And I'd like to try and wrap this thing up around nine o'clock. That would be 40 minutes. I'm really kind of hoping it doesn't go that long because frankly, we've had a couple of meetings, and there's going to be, as you heard, quite a few more, where we actually talk about substance and policy. Those are not the things on the list for tonight. But with that, what we'll do is, we'll ask people who want to speak to come to the microphone. There's kind of an aisle that's been preserved. We'll ask people to sort of line up, don't wrestle with each other. There will be more meetings coming up, so if you don't get a chance tonight, there'll be other meetings that you can certainly jump in on.
Also emails.
Yeah, and, thank you, Chris. Yeah, and as always, emails, you know, Dave mentioned that people have been calling him. All of us are available. So, whether it's an email or a phone call, if you don't get a chance tonight and you want to throw something into our consideration prior to our next meeting, please take advantage of one or more of those tools as well. So, with that, if you want to add something to the comments tonight, please come to the microphone, tell us your name so we at least know who we're talking to, and try and keep it around three minutes, and we'll do this for a little while.
Good evening. I'm Tom Sleeder, longtime resident of Downers Grove. I believe the library should be run in a nonpartisan manner to efficiently provide library services to the residents of Downers Grove. And I particularly believe that one should be able to use the library without any indication that the staff or board members are of any particular political persuasion. I don't think that's the case now. It's my view that the current arrangement where the library is part of the village has not worked out really well. One concern is the budget of the library is rubber stamped. To my knowledge, it's never been turned down by the Village Council. I do not mean that as a criticism of the Village Council. I'm really impressed with the amount of work that the Village Council has to do. They've got their own budget, they are not going to be an expert probably in the library budget. But as a result, there's, I think, some budget items that are inappropriate. There was, I believe, over $100,000 was spent to hire a racial grievance entrepreneur who got paid over $100,000 to say that we're all racist here. I'd just like to see the Library Board function as a board of directors and not as a group of political activists. of political activists, and so I would urge that the referendum go ahead so that the citizens will have a chance to elect and have accountable members of the library board, so best wishes on your deliberations, you've got a lot of work ahead, I'm sure.
Good evening, Kylie Spurn, Downers Grove resident. I'd like to give you a quick history of our Downers Grove library and our Board of Trustees. From its humble beginnings in a reading room above the Farmers and Merchants Bank in 1891, to a nationally acclaimed, award-winning, five-star public library that is ranked in the top 10 in the nation. The Downers Grove Public Library has proudly served all members of the Downers Grove community, regardless of race, gender, or economic status. In the history of Downers Grove Public Library, there have been five library-related referendums. In 1911, Downers Grove voters passed the first referendum to create a tax-supported public library. Voters returned to the polls in 1916 to change the form of government in our village to a commission-based one. In 1917, the first elections for village council occurred, and later that year, the first-appointed Library Board of Trustees took their oath of office. The second referendum occurred in 1954 to increase funding, as demands for services were rapidly growing. That referendum passed. The third referendum was in 1975, when the community recognized a need to rebuild and update our library. That referendum also passed. In 1995, the village of Downers Grove placed a bond referendum for library improvements on the consolidated election ballot. That referendum failed. A year later, the final referendum was in 1996, to add an addition to the existing building and to remodel the library. That referendum passed. There has never been a referendum for an elected library board. There are only four libraries in our area that have a five-star rating. Those libraries are Des Plaines, Elmhurst, Naperville, and Downers Grove. These four libraries have boards of trustees that are appointed. Compare this to the surrounding libraries of Westmont, Indian Prairie, Hinsdale, Lamont, Plainfield, Lisle, and Woodridge. Those libraries have elected boards. Not one of those libraries has a star rating. Not one of those libraries is nationally acclaimed. Not one of those libraries provides the exceptional level of services that our five-star Downers Grove library does. I find it very interesting that the four libraries with a five-star rating have appointed boards, while those around us with elected boards are not ranked at all. Coincidence? Through, over the course of discussions in the last few weeks, there was statements made that people had been asking for an elected board for decades. A FOIA request has revealed that from January 1st, 2022, to December 3rd, 2024, only one person had written to the village council requesting an elected library board. Just one email, hardly decades' worth. The Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees has managed our library effectively and with great care for over 130 years. In the history of the Library Board of Trustees, only two trustees have ever been removed from the board. Both had political agendas, and both were removed for code of conduct violations. In the past, the main criteria for library appointments were an interest in service to the community, an interest in the library, and most importantly, no political agenda of their own for the library. The process worked until it was politicized. Our community does not want an elected board resulting in a library that resembles Westmont or Aurora. We want to maintain and grow our amazingly incredible library, the jewel and the crown of our community. I ask the village council to please stop wasting both village and library resources on this, please look at improvements with the application process, and please let our library board continue their valuable work in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for having this meeting tonight. My name is Laura Hoist, I'm a 39-year resident of Downers Grove, and I have spoken in favor of having elected Library Board Trustees. There's been a lot of talk about the five-star library. I would point out that the five-star designation was appointed by a library journal, and that five-star rating was not given by the folks in Downers Grove, who have a number of concerns about the way the library's been operated, particularly since Director Julie Milovic has been in charge. From my perspective, you know, having lived here for that long, it really has been in the recent past where political activism has occurred at the library that has been extremely noticeable and uncomfortable for me as a Downers Grove resident. So one of you raised a very good question, what's wrong with the current appointment process? Well, virtually all of the current Library Board of Trustees are leftist-leaning individuals that appear to have been aligned with the outgoing Biden administration. That may or may not be true, because I don't know many of you, but it is frustrating that the village council caved to pressure from the library activists to terminate and remove, really, the only library trustee that spoke for us, meaning the conservatives in the community, which comprise probably half of our population in Downers Grove, and those, the Christian, the God-fearing individuals that love our country. This is, this has been changed. We want the library to be a neutral institution. We want the library to reject Equity Consultant RGW's advice that we paid over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for. That was the report that told us that we are racist in Downers Grove, which is totally not true. We're a good community, we need to come together again. We need to be free of the leftist political agenda propagandizing in the library, free of pornography, free of the LGBTQ+ influencing via library staff recommendations, free of Pride Month, free of anti-Christian policies, free of storytimes on topics like gender fluidity, gender transitioning, and the use of pronouns. We need to be free of that. It's very relevant to my experience in the library, to be accosted with this political push to have, force individuals to have the dissent suppressed, as is happening here in the audience tonight, I feel it, I'm feeling it, and I feel it in the library as well. I want to be, have my children and my grandchildren have a comfortable place to come, and currently, with all the messaging that's in the library that is leftist-leaning, or propagandized, or sexual, you know, influencing children towards sexualization, those are the disturbing elements that need to be improved on. Our constitutional rights must be respected. Yes?
Wrap it up.
All right. So what is best for Downers Grove? What are the issues that we are trying to figure out? I would say, no more tax dollars spent on trans activism in our library, no more tax dollars spent on diversity, equity, inclusion, which is really divisive, discriminatory, and exclusionary. It is illegal. DEI is illegal, it violates civil rights law. No more spending on capital improvements we don't want or need, no more explicit sexual content displayed in the library in disregard of parental rights, and Illinois sex crimes designed to protect minors, no more unlawful curating policies that censor conservative books or prevent them from being purchased, and no more lawsuits brought by former employees whose safety was threatened by patrons and cover-ups by the library director and others to hide what is occurring.
Okay, Laura.
It will take lots of time.
Stop, please.
All right.
We get it.
All right, thank you.
Please email that to us, okay?
I will do so, thank you, Mayor.
Guys, we, 27 minutes left is what we'd like to have here, and, you know, one of the hard things is to hear stuff you don't like and let it be said. And it's, but I guarantee that's one of the things we're gonna have to have, live with each other with tonight. It would be nice, I'm killing, burning some time right now, which is no fair for everybody who's standing in the line and wants to talk, just let people speak, you don't have to agree with it, but the moans and groans, or applause, or any other things are not adding to it, what they're doing is eating clock. And I hope what you saw was, folks that are up here, I guarantee, if you start from one end and go to the other, there's a list of things, as long as it's pad of paper, that we don't see the world the same on. But we're trying to find places to agree, and we've got a process that we've laid out that we're thinking about going on, and I hope that some folks out there are gonna be looking for places to agree with the work that we're doing, and that's frankly what we'd like to hear about. If you don't agree, tell us you don't agree with what we're talking about here, looking into the past is not gonna be helpful to the future. Your turn.
Thanks. I'm Jessica Nastle, a longtime Downers Grove resident. My work is in strategic planning and outcomes assessment and information literacy, so I just wanna say, my first job was at the Downers Grove library. I love it, like many of the people in here, but I do want to respectfully disagree with some of the council members who have asked us not to look backward, especially because my work is in outcomes assessment. If this is to be kind of a goal-driven effort, then I believe in assessment of our current practices and their consequences, I believe that is vital. We need to understand, if the current practice is the appointed Library Board of Trustees members, then it is important for members of the body up here, as well as members of the community, to know both the positive and negative, intended and unintended consequences of that process. If something needs to be fixed, we, I do believe that we need to understand what specifically has happened that needs to be fixed, before we can determine what the best route to solve that is. That's it, thanks.
Hi, Chris Adorie, I wanted to start by saying that I'm very grateful to all of you who helped make tonight happen, because it really shows that you've been listening to the public, whether through comment or through email, and listening to each other. It's very clear that all of you care very deeply about the community, and you would not be sitting there, elected or appointed, if that were not true. I had two comments directly related to the framework that you're discussing and will be discussing in the future. First, I wanted to ask you, commit to finding ways to help limit or prevent the spread of misinformation around this framework, or if it comes to pass, the referendum itself. Misinformation thrives in environments where people don't trust each other, or the officials that they've elected to represent them. This meeting tonight goes a long way toward helping build that trust back for the council and for the board, and continuing to work together, to share information together, and to demonstrate that you're listening will be very important going forward. As Mayor Barnett said earlier, I know you're all committed to transparency, so maybe this goes without saying, but having simple, easy-to-share updates in readily accessible places that summarize your joint conversations will make it easier for folks to understand and what is going on, to avoid fear-mongering, to avoid hyperbole, to resist the temptation to make up their own facts of their own. While there's certainly always bad actors in any situation, I think some people that spread misinformation do it, aren't, they're not necessarily where they're doing it, so that extra effort to communicate, or even over-communicate, will be really important. Second, while the temptation will likely and may be necessarily to be to focus on the very tangible financial impacts that changes in library governance might have on Downers Grove taxpayers, I think it's also important to include the non-monetary or even qualitative criteria that might be relevant as well. So those of you who know me might be thinking, wow, this huge data nerd is standing up there saying, like, don't pay attention to the quant, use that subjective input, but I'm, yes, yes, I am. I think there's ways to compile and assess that information, and about those softer data points, things like our village's reputation, our library's reputation, staff library morale, or equity and fairness in the way that we do elections. As you've heard over the last couple of months, these criteria matter to the residents of Downers Grove, and they may be directly impacted by any changes we make to the way that the library board is selected. Finally, I'm gonna say something that some of you may also find truly shocking, I agree with Eileen Briner. I agree that when you said, in the December 11th board meeting, that we should have a more transparent way of appointing trustees, and that it's currently an opaque and not-at-all-open process. Trustee Williams have referred to this earlier, and I agree, but if, through the next month's discussions, the appointment process is retained, I hope you'll consider exchanges that would address some of those concerns raised by Downers Grove residents, trustees, and commissioners, like greater transparency, accounting for a community's diversity, and independence of thought and action. Thank you again, and I look forward to your discussions.
Eileen Briner, I've been a resident here since 1982. Whereas the current process of selecting Downers Grove Library Board members is totally opaque, I ask that you work towards an elected library board. The current process, for people here, I know you all know the process, but many people here and those listening don't know the current process. People fill out a form to volunteer for any of the boards in the village. These profile sheets are not accessible to the public. When someone is selected for an interview by the council, this too is not revealed to the public. The interviews are private, the selection is private, there is no public input to the process at all. We, the public, pay for the library with no input as to our representation. We vote on school boards and park district boards, it's time for an elected board. The library budget is $7 million and growing. The current board has shown no resistance to spending. A full-time social worker has been added to the 2025 budget, a 75 to $100,000 cost dependent on healthcare selection. Never mind that the village already has a full-time social worker on staff. In January, the library board will consider remodeling plans and costs for yet another remodel of the library. This one should be a whopper, since it will extend the footprint of the library. This remodel is not necessary for ADA compliance, although the insinuation is that it is. The library ADA non-compliance is in digital compliance for hearing and visually impaired. It's not about the physical building. We hear a lot about the five-star library. Please note that this award is a trade journal award. It's based solely on budget and usage data. It was awarded in 2022, based on 2020 numbers. We keep hearing about it, though, the library journal discontinued the award that year. The opinion of the constituents or the taxpayers is way more important than a trade journal. I thank you in advance for your trust in the community and their voices and their votes. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Laura Kamidolsky. I really appreciate, I got a lot of good feelings from seeing you all here together and building that trust, like some of you said, and talking about this rather than rushing forward with the referendum, so I hope that is gonna be the case, and I'm looking forward to hearing what you guys do together in meetings, and hopefully I'll be there. Then, I heard some of the comments, and I got a really bad feeling again when I just reflected on the people in our community that are actively kind of excluded and being called out by name as to who isn't welcome, in my opinion, that's what was said, and I ask you to think about these people that are gonna either be appointed or elected, what that means for, you know, someone going through that process. I think a lot of this is to drive people away from public service, and I commend all of you again for being elected or appointed, but who's gonna wanna subject themselves to that, and then how, what kind of balance is the Board of Library Trustees gonna have politically? If it's just a really committed, in my view, extreme and exclusionary group, you know, If it's just a really committed, in my view, extreme and exclusionary group, you know, trying to get these library board seats? And I, I just want you to think about people in our community that might wanna serve the library, and how are they gonna feel when they come up against some of the stuff I heard tonight? Thank you.
My name is Bill Meemberg. I'm a Downers Grove resident, and I'm also a former library trustee. And I'm having trouble with the mic. There we go. I'd like to use my time tonight to address some misconceptions about this matter of a different structure for governing the library, and validate some of the reasons why we might consider this. I'll start by asking that we all recognize that the idea of a referendum to explore this question, or in the event that we actually do implement a different structure for the library, is a perfectly legitimate path. It has nothing to do with some of the malicious reasons that have been suggested by some members of our community. Specifically, it has nothing to do with not loving the library. My family, particularly my two young sons, are avid users and big fans of the library. The library is the product of decades of effort that predates the current library leadership and board. You can love the library and agree with the need for a change in the structure. And we can change the structure without compromising all that is great about our library. So vilifying people who are pushing for this change is inappropriate and invalid. It also has nothing to do with being anti-LGBTQ, or promoting some far-right, or any other agenda for that matter, as some have suggested. Actually, to suggest so speaks for the need for change, because the library's governance is intended to represent the taxpayer, not to select certain groups or positions for advocacy, or for any other purpose, other than to provide library services for the greater good. And I don't mind saying, it definitely doesn't have anything to do with unsubstantiated threats or profane voicemails used to shame members of council and broker in victimhood. And the commissioner did show, should be ashamed. Instead, this change in structure is driven simply and solely by principles of transparency and accountability. The current selection of library trustees lacks transparency, and it sounds like we have broad agreement about, about that. We don't know who or how people are selected versus rejected for interviews. The interviews are not public, and the deliberation in council happens in closed executive sessions. And as I well know, the process to remove a trustee fails even the most basic standards of due process. Moving closer towards alignment with the fundamentals of a democratic process is a prudent, not a radical, step. The library lacks direct accountability to the taxpayer. The village's budget review highlighted the fact that the library is the only unit, single-purpose unit of government, representing greater than 1% of our property tax bill, with the ability to determine a tax levy that doesn't have directly elected representatives. In my time on the board, I unfortunately saw firsthand examples of overspending budgets, questionable judgment leading to unplanned spending, and unnecessary increases to the tax levy for under-defined or arbitrary spending, that all call into question whether this responsibility is being handled appropriately. As you know, the council has little control over the library tax levy, and multiple degrees of separation and accountability for those who do should not be allowed to continue. The idea of a non-binding referendum was a simple and efficient first step in this process, and I appreciate council's effort to put the question to the voters for input. But the backlash and the threat of more unaccountable spending by the library to undermine that effort has poisoned this option, and I don't believe it was necessary to begin with. The bottom line is that the village should be able to determine the right structure for a unit of government to achieve that transparency, accountability, and alignment with democratic principles. Period. Full stop. And I'm gonna go off script and remind everybody, both the council, the board, and the residents, who works for who? Who is elected by the people and the taxpayers? And who is appointed? And we expect change. The current situation is untenable. To that end, I support and encourage this work, this effort to work constructively between the library board and the village council. I also expect that there should be an intervention if there's not sufficient cooperation, and that the council should move with appropriate urgency and timeliness to effect the necessary changes to the structure and the governance of the library. I came in tonight hopeful, and I've already heard half of the people on the council and the board start to walk this back. And I'm disappointed and frustrated with that, that that's our going-in position, and I hope there's more resolve going forward. Thank you.
My name's Laura Alexander. I'll try to keep this short, so we can all get home. I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of the village council, and the library board of trustees, and all of the staff here, everybody that donates their time as a public official. You, you guys are all heroes in my book, so thank you. Also, just wanted to address the people that are saying Library Journal isn't a reputable source. It is. I worked in book publishing for over 10 years, and everybody there agrees that it's a very reliable and reputable institution. And the fact that they have given our library five stars, I think speaks volumes to our community and our library as well. So, thank you, everybody, for being open to the public and putting together the solution of a joint subcommittee. It seems like it's the fairest and, you know, most open and transparent option going forward to address the questions that have been raised tonight. So, just, thank you.
Hi, Ed Pollock, longtime Downers resident. First of all, I would like to thank you for taking this first step tonight, getting the village council and the board of trustees together, talking. Great start. I very much appreciate it. I've made critical comments in the past, and so I did want to make a point of thanking you for taking this very positive first step. Whether you end up with deciding on elected or appointed board, or some other hybrid of those types of approaches, I think, you know, I thought a lot about this in terms of what really matters here. And ultimately, I think trustee Sladek had said that ultimately, the, or the role of the trustee is the role of the trustee, and it doesn't change by the way they get put on the board. And I was thinking that what really matters here is, there's some core values here that are, I believe, should not be subject to debate. And each one of you represents the entire village of Downers Grove, whether you're elected, whether you're appointed. You're not for a particular constituency, you're not for this group, and so you're not a representative of some subset of people. You represent all the people of Downers Grove. And I think particularly with something like a library, that's a resource for all of Downers Grove, and all the people of Downers Grove should have the same sort of access, the same sort of representation in the material they read, representation on the board, working at the library. We've heard there are people that really want, have a very exclusionary view, and they want, their claim is that they want representation so that they can exclude people from these types of things. And it's actually a contradiction to say you have to include the exclusionary people. It, it makes no sense at all. You either have, you either appreciate the people in Downers Grove and want to include them, or you don't. And if you don't, you've now excluded yourself from that community, and therefore, your views don't represent the people of Downers Grove. So anyway, whichever way you go with this, whichever way it comes out, I would like to see there's some way of making sure that this, this type of value of, of making sure that all people have the same sort of access is somehow put into this so that it's not subject to change based on whichever new trustee member is appointed or elected, so. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Eric Blau. I spoke at the November 12th village council meeting, and at that point, I brought up some of the ways in which Illinois law restricts what the council can do in terms of, of the structure of library boards. And I just wanna remind everyone here that Illinois law is very clear on a lot of this stuff, and, and there are only very specific things that can change the structure of the appointment process of the library board. So, I do wanna say, I think it's great that this joint meeting has happened, and that this feels like it's actually a discussion now, whereas the vector that we were on prior to this coming together felt like it wasn't a full discussion. So, I think that this is a good way to move forward, but I think that it is important to keep in mind that there's only so much that can be done here. Even if, even if everyone comes around and says, we want an appointed, we want an elected library board, there may not be the political power to be able to do that. And that's, you know, presupposing that that's the conclusion of this, of this process. So, so I think it's, I think it's important that, that in this discussion going forward, we remain pragmatic about what we can accomplish, and we, and we set goals that, that represent things like transparency and accountability, regardless of the specific mechanism of appointment or election of library board members. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm David Eblin. I'm a 33-year resident of Downers Grove, and a former public official who faced many of the things you're facing tonight. I just want to applaud you for the process that you're describing. A process is so critical to making good decisions for large groups, and you have all the components. I thought the statement that came from both of our leaders here was excellent. You've got a representation from both groups. You're gonna have a very open, transparent process. You're gonna make it very visible to the public. You're gonna have a timeframe that works very well to give you enough time to do the study that it's needed, but not so long that it won't end at some point. You've also taken account for those that want a referendum that, in the future, if that's needed, it's there. Bottom line is, you've really done a great job of outlining that. I think we should all be very proud of that. You should be very proud of it, and we look forward to the results that come out of a very good process that you've outlined. Good luck to you.
Hi. I'm Leslie Harris Henderson, 25-year resident of Downers Grove. And, oh my gosh, I'm getting choked up because I'm just so moved by who you are for us. I really appreciate all the work that you all do for our village. I also want to apologize for being disrespectful to Laura as, as she was speaking. And I'm gonna thank Mayor Barnett for reminding us to be respectful to each other. And as the mother of two LGBTQ kids who identified when they were still minors, I appreciate that the library is a safe place for them. They've always been avid readers, and they've always loved the library, and they feel like it's, it's a place for them. And now they are tax-paying LGBTQ adults in Downers Grove. So, and they still love the library, and we all still do. So, thank you so much.
Marshall Schmidt. My family moved here in 1975, so this will be the 50th year that I've been, been in Downers Grove. And as you know, I've been very critical of the village council in the past, but tonight is a night to celebrate. The, these two boards have listened to what the community has had to say, and not only have they engaged in a very constructive discussion about how to move forward, but they've attracted a very wide range of people from the community. So as this new year begins, this is really a time to celebrate Downers Grove and all the things that we have here. In, in going forward in the process, I want to just make a, a couple of observations, one of which is that you have to be careful that this subcommittee, committee, whatever you call it, is very carefully defined in the scope of its work and its mission. Because as you can tell from the comments here tonight, it will be very easy for this group to get hijacked based upon political agendas, whatever those agendas might be. And so what I would encourage you to do in formulating what the mission is of this group, is that really the primary consideration for the group is what is the structure going to be? What is the process going to be? Not what should the policies be of the library board. It's very important that you set up a structure that then goes forward and does one thing, makes decisions based upon what's in the best interests of Downers Grove. And in formulating the mission, I encourage you to make sure that it's very clear what the scope of the mission is, and what the primary criteria need to be in implementing that scope. Thank you very much.
Would you like to wrap us up for tonight?
I am wrapping you up, and I've got a very short question. Bill Walrich, whopping three-year resident of Downers Grove, but I come from Glen Allen and Wheaton, where they have fine libraries, but Downers is without question the best that I've seen. So I applaud you all for that. This is a nerdy procedural question. I'm looking at the agenda, and we were supposed to have roll calls of the council and the trustees, and then a motion for electronic participate. Was I napping when that happened? I, I don't recall it taking place.
We did not, we did not do that. We didn't have anybody that wanted to participate remotely or was eligible.
Oh, okay. Fair enough. Have a good night, everyone.
It's, it's good to keep us on our toes. Thank you for that, Bill. Before we close for the evening, we'll just give anybody up here that wants to add something to the conversation, sort of a last-minute wrap-up opportunity, and then we'll, we'll move on. So, anybody got something they wanna jump in with?
If each of us spoke for two minutes, we'd be here for another half hour.
Right. Yeah, I'm aware. That's, that's one of the things Matt and I talked about. Anyone? All right. Well, I'll let Matt completely close us, but, but thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you all to the folks that are sitting up here for taking the time and, and being willing to jump in as well. Matt?
Yeah, I'll just, just echo all that, and thank you for, for sitting down and us talking, and I'm glad we are where we are here. And thank you all for, for coming here, and the fact that so many people are engaged in this, I think is, is really good for our community. So, thank you.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
I'll second.
We'll go with a library second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all. We are adjourned.